Good evening.
We're starting.
As district clerk, I'd like to call this meeting to order for March 16th, 2022, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin with the election of officers, we have a school board member that is remote, and if you could identify yourself and your location, and if anyone is in the room with you.
Jamie Fitzpatrick. I am at a hotel in Times Square in New York City for St. Patrick's Eve, and I am alone in my room.
Thank you. Our other board member, Moira Bashaw, is excused this evening, as is our student representative. Election of officers. Is there a motion for a chair?
I make a motion to elect Dawn Dutton as chair.
Is there any discussion?
I'll just say that if it's the will of the board, I'm happy to do it again. It's been great working with everyone, and I'm excited about working with Rick and getting to know him. So yeah, if any, you know, so if it's the will, then I'm happy to do it. So, thank you, guys.
Any further discussion? And a roll call vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Congratulations, Dawn.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jamie Fitzpatrick for vice chair.
Second. Okay. Discussion. Roll call vote. Rick?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Jamie.
Jamie gets to vote.
Jamie gets to vote.
Oh, Jamie, sorry.
I'm not voting for him. Aye.
All right, congratulations, everyone.
Thank you, Phyllis. It's nice sitting next to you.
Oh, we need...
The treasurer and the clerk.
Clerk.
Shuffle, shuffle, shuffle. Elbow harder this time around.
My superintendent's report is short this evening.
You thought I had hiccups, sorry.
I did. You're good.
All the big bags is being a mom, so you carry everything with you.
All right. All right, so we now move on to school district clerk.
We would nominate Phyllis.
So I would like to nominate Phyllis. Second. All right, and a roll call vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Myself? Yes. Right.
Ron Brickett. Ron Brickett.
Okay, so I'd like to nominate Ron Brickett for school district treasurer. Second. Jamie, any discussion?
Yeah. I don't know. Has the person been in the role before?
Yes, yes, this person is our...
How long?
Oh, many years.
Oh, a long, very long time. And Ron just recently retired as the business administrator at Raymond School District, so he's completely familiar with school district operations.
All right, thank you. Good question. Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes. School district deputy treasurer.
Phyllis.
That's right, Phyllis. Look at you, Phyllis, lucky, lucky. I would like to nominate Phyllis Kennedy to school district deputy treasurer.
Aye, second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, action on the minutes. So the minutes for February 16th, 2022, and February 23rd, 2022.
I'll move to approve both.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? All right. Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, so manifest documents, as soon as I grab a pen, I will sign what I have to and send those around. Thank you. Tom, are there any nominations or have my thing here? Yep, nominations, no resignations, it looks like.
I have one nomination.
Okay.
Nomination of Alyssa Doucette at the Bakey School for a position of intervention teacher.
Move to approve.
Second.
Right, any discussion? All right, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yep.
And myself, yes. Great. All right, no resignations. Superintendent's report.
I have, if it's okay, I'll also do the student council report because she's not here, and she gave it to me.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'll do that first.
If nobody else has any objection, we okay with him? Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, since the men, and this is, I'll try to read this in Jocelyn's voice. "Since the last meeting, there has been many fun activities happening. Our student council is making the plans of winter carnival, which will be held right before the spring vacation. Winter athletics finished up with 180-plus kids participating. At the high school and middle school combined, the high school boys' basketball advanced to the quarterfinals. Ice, high school ice hockey qualified for the tournament, and all teams had successful seasons. Two individuals, bowler Gage Libby and swimmer Ashley Nagel, participated individually in an NHIA tournament competition. At the middle school level, the boys' A basketball team completed an undefeated season as the tri-county association's Division III champions. Congratulations to coaches Souther and Burns and the boys on a great season. Three high school athletes received all-state recognition. Jared Kalil for basketball and Josh Stevens for ice hockey earned first-team recognition. Basketball players Jason Allen and Kevin Cola, I apologize, Kevin, I'm going to try to read your name, but it's Coloogee. Thank you, Mr. Stack, were given honorable mention status. Spring sports begin March 21st at the high school and March 28th for middle school. Parents are encouraged to sign their kids up using the online system or to reach out to Dr. Dawson for more information. Mr. Dawson recently earned his doctorate. Mrs. Alley has been working very hard to plan a senior success day for our seniors. On March 23rd, our seniors will participate in Senior Success Day. This is a day planned just for our seniors. Students will have opportunities to learn new things that can help in the auditing world. It's a mandatory day for all seniors. This event is sponsored by our PTO and the Career Pathways Program. This day will include a financial fair, community service, and skills for life. We're looking forward to a few supplies to help make this day a success as well as door prizes." Let's see. "Our band and chorus had a joint concert. They did a wonderful job and had the finale. They worked together to play one song as a group. I was very fortunate to participate in that concert last evening, and it was really, really fun. The kids did an amazing job. Next Friday at 7:00 PM, sorry, Jocelyn didn't participate, Jocelyn did participate in the concert, but I have to put on my voice. I participated in the concert, too. It was really fun. I just wanted to be clear who was, so Jocelyn and I both participated. It was really fun. And they're doing the Addams Family this weekend for the high school drama program, and it's going to be great, a great show, and we hope to see everybody there. So thanks, Jocelyn, for that report. And for my report, I just have a couple of things to talk about. I wanted to give the board an update that we have been working hard already on developing surveys for teachers, teachers, all staff, and students regarding our grading practices per the directive of the ISA committee. Those surveys are ready for the meeting next Wednesday to be reviewed by the ISA committee and then sent out to the staff and families and students to get feedback about our grading practices. The second thing that we've been doing, Dr. Haynes has already put together a very, very strong plan for working on curriculum alignment, starting immediately. So we are working on aligning our curriculum documents and creating unified, clearly understandable documents that will hopefully be done for first draft by July 1st. It all kind of depends on how things go over the next couple of months, but we are certainly in a much better place in terms of operations. So I just wanted to share with the community, I haven't given you an update since before February break, and I wanted to be clear that we are finally operating in what I would consider to be a relatively normal fashion. And by relatively normal, I mean we get up every day and we aren't checking in as to whether or not school is even going to be open. We know we're open each day, we have staff. The level of crisis has turned down considerably in the last four weeks. It's almost, it's impossible to put into words how difficult it has been to run a school district during these last two years and to be an employee. There's just no way to explain the level of anxiety and stress worrying about whether or not we could even be open every day, which was unfathomable two years ago. For the last four weeks, we have had more conversations about teaching and learning and education than we have in almost two years. It's awesome. So we are very, very happy about this. I do want to say to the community that I know that the last few months with the election process has been very, very trying for our community. And I want to be clear with everyone as we move forward that, that one of my personal missions or goals is to help everyone in the community to focus on helping our students be the most successful they can be, not on fighting with each other. So I'll say that again. Fighting with each other takes away from the focus of helping our students be the best that they can be. Our community needs to come together for the students now, and that's what I'm focusing on. And I want to invite anyone who has questions, concerns, or issues with the district or the work that we're going to do to help our students succeed, to come see me personally. And I mean that sincerely. I've had a few people do it recently. It was awesome. And it really helps me to know what's going on and what perceptions are out there and what needs to happen. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do on capital issues in the district. Our facilities, particularly the Bakey School, need work. Memorial is not far behind, and I want to kindly remind everyone, the high school is very close to being 20 years old. It looks amazing because our custodians are unbelievable, but don't let this building fool you, right? It's 20 years old, so we have to take that seriously, or it's coming up on 20 years old. I'm just asking that our community focus on what the students need and not the divisiveness between each other. And you'll hear a lot more about that over the next year. In addition to everything else that's been happening, we are super excited to move forward with the spring activities. Jocelyn's update was a little preview of those things, but it just feels so much closer to normal. Graduation is coming up. We only have 11 weeks of school left. So I just want to remind everyone that this is going to go very, very fast. We will be presenting you with a strategic plan in the next couple of weeks. Dr. Haynes has done a phenomenal job doing the third draft of the strategic plan. It is very different. You'll notice in the strategic plan that we placed a timeline or a task to set the academic performance indicators instead of trying to hash that out this spring. There's also a part of the plan that identifies the capital improvement plan, which Mr. Angel has broken into two parts. One is repairs, and the other is actual capital changes that need to occur. You'll see that in the document when it comes out. The draft is ready for you, and we feel like it's in great shape. The administrative team met on Tuesday, so we've been working on curriculum planning, grading, and the strategic plan on top of Niasq. Our plate is very, very full. There's a lot going on, but it's all getting done. So we're really happy about it, and I just wanted to thank the administrative team for all of their hard work on those three items, which alone is a significant amount of work. Niasq is its own huge piece of work, and we'll talk about that more when we talk about the early release days and the calendar later on in this meeting. So thank you, everyone, and I'm looking forward to the next few months. It's nice to be back to talking about teaching and learning.
All right, so we move on to committee reports and committee assignment requests. So before we start, I just would like to put out there, like I did last year, and I think Jim did the year before, if I could have everyone send me their top three subcommittee choices, where they'd like to be, and the qualifications or reasons why you'd like to be on those three, that would be greatly appreciated so that I can set subcommittees. And I just want to say, not everybody's always happy, but I do try to take into account what I think is going to be in the best interest to move things forward. So it's not an easy task, I will tell you that. I'm already thinking of the stress that comes with, and I'm already not happy about it. So maybe somebody else should have been chair. No. So I will just ask if any of our subcommittee chairs from last year, if they have any updates, if they'd like to give them. So we'll start with policy. Heather, do you have an update that you would like to give?
We have no updates, just the next policy meeting will be April 6th.
Perfect. Excellence in student achievement. Jamie?
We had tentatively planned a meeting for next Wednesday. Is that, is that still the case?
We did do that, didn't we? So yes, because, yes, yes. So no pressure. Get those subcommittees figured out quick.
Would you like them to email you by Friday or?
Yeah, that would actually be great. That would be fabulous. Yeah, if we could do that, that would be fantastic. All right, finance. Jamie?
Yeah, I actually have minutes that are due to read, and they include budget transfers, so we need to, we need to make sure we go through that. So the last meeting was held on February 23rd. The attendees were Jay Baker, myself, M. Bashaw, and Angel. Minutes from 1:19:21 were reviewed. Jim Baker motion for acceptance, I seconded. Discussion on clarifying that under held spending, all the numbers are actually thousands as opposed to just the numbers that are there. The move was to approve the amended minutes to add the thousands to the minutes in that area, and that was approved 2 to 0 with M. Bashaw abstaining. Business administrator comments. M. Angel agrees.
Uh-oh.
Well, at least it's a funny look.
I think he's buffering.
I always enjoy it when it's a funny look, you know?
Looks a little angry.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to?
I know.
I want to see if he freezes.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that. Oh, there he goes. You're back. He cut out for a minute there.
Am I back?
Yeah, you're back now. Yeah.
Okay. There was a discussion of market timing. That is best taken in the fall. Our contract ends in November. We currently use consolidated. Mr. Angel reached out to Kingston and Newton to see if they would like to join us with cooling needs. They're both interested. Mr. Angel is also discussing a solar plan with the town of Kingston. First meeting on that committee is in March. Financial reporting. Mr. Angel is working on simplifying the financial reporting and spending considerable time on that task. Incumbrances changes, encumbrance changes month over month. Mr. Angel provided a download from the accounting system. The quality of the data is still in question. He's working towards ability to provide the change in encumbrances on month over month, so that can be reviewed with the committee. Future considerations. Mr. Angel noted that they had collected surplus furniture for another district at no cost to our district. The status on Chase Field, to the best of his knowledge, dirt was down. The plan was to be seeded and hopefully getting everything ready for the start in spring. Mr. Angel will provide status update at the next facilities meeting. Trust fund balances, I won't go to the pennies all round. Special education trust fund was $241,000. Capital improvement maintenance fund, $273,000. Unanticipated educational expense funds, $200,000. The only activity in those three sets of funds was a small amount of interest. Facilities used revolving fund, $213,000. That includes rental income of $11,667. Total reserve fund balance is $927,513. We still have $545,012 of unexpended funds from 2021. The grand total of those two numbers is $1,472, excuse me, $1,472,525. Revenue and general spending reports. Held spending, year-to-date, we have spent $2.061 million, and we have encumbered $2.248 million. The unexpended funds in that account is at $623,000. That's a reduction by approximately $33,000 from last month, and this includes a $430,000 premium reimbursement. All non-held spending accounts, the year-to-date spend is $15.344 million. Encumbered is $12,947, $12,947,000. Unexpended funds is $2.090 million, which is a change of approximately $400,000 from last month. Jay Fitzpatrick expressed concern that this change in the account would leave us with less than $500,000 in unexpended funds versus a historical number greater than a million. Mr. Angel does not have the final numbers. He thinks it will be higher than the $500,000. He will provide an estimate of the unexpended balance at the next finance meeting. The revenues year-to-date booked is $29.167 million. That includes the receivables of the full year, Kingston and Newton. Uncollected balance is $5.647 million, consisting of $2.077 million that has not been built in Fremont yet. Use of fund balance of $2.5 million in adequate education funding of $876,000. Open items, the high school roof waiting contractor quotes to address some of the issues. There's no update on that available, and Mr. Angel provided information on new book receipts. There were four budget requests, transfer requests, that were approved unanimously by the finance committee. One was for new special education needs at Memorial. So the money went into, it came out of other professional services, and it moved to in-house Memorial for $14,762.92. It also had one to cover additional psychological services for $47,898. They came out of the other professional services, psychology at Bakey, excuse me, went to the psychology services at Bakey, came out of the ones from Memorial, the middle school. Jay Fitzpatrick asked if this was what was in any way associated with funding, excuse me, associated with COVID, so that maybe grant funding would be available. Mr. Angel will review that and advise. The third one was reallocating middle school, high school to Bakey for physical therapy costs. That was $24,000. And the final one was from in-house to contracted speech therapy for $68,278 from the middle school, split to Bakey and Memorial, $25,000 to Bakey, and $43,278 to Memorial. M. Bashaw motion to approve all. Jay Baker seconded. Unanimous vote, all in favor. And that's what I got.
Okay. We'll move on to facilities.
Facilities has not met since our last board meeting. Normally it would be scheduled on April 6th, but I don't think that's been set yet.
Okay, public relations.
Pretty much the same. Public relations has a meeting scheduled on April 6th, as far as I know.
Okay, great. SST?
I have not met.
Okay. Budget more is not here. Oh, I skipped personnel. I don't know when our next meeting is scheduled for. It's a good question. I haven't seen that.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah, I don't know that I've seen the schedule. And wellness.
Our, we have not met since our last meeting, and I am not sure when our next meeting is yet.
All right, we already did our student council representative report, so we are now on to first public comment. May I ask that anybody that comes to the podium just states their first and last name and the town they are from? And we do have a three-minute time limit for everybody.
I won't need close to three minutes.
Okay.
Ken McNulty, Kingston. I would like to strongly recommend a complete reshuffling of the subcommittee assignments this year. The school board is a seven-person committee, but we haven't seen adequate distribution of the board members in the past. ISA, finance, facilities, each has had one person who has been on the same committee for five consecutive years and another person for three consecutive years. There may be some pushback to this, but I have no doubt that the other school board members can handle stepping up into these roles and do a fantastic job. Again, this is a school board made up of very people with different ideas, and I think it's time we let some different ideas into our district. Thank you.
Not sure if I come up now, because you haven't talked about it yet. It's still on the agenda. Do I come up now or the second?
Yes, if you want to speak about anything that's in the next part of the agenda, you should do it now.
Okay.
Yep.
Elizabeth Lanaville, Kingston, New Hampshire. I'm a parent of a third grader and a preschooler at Bakey and a teacher in another district. I am here just to reiterate that I am against the one-hour early releases every Wednesday. Every week, an early release causes a massive burden to families with two working parents. Most parents do not have the flexibility to leave their jobs every week an hour early, which would cause many to have to find and pay extra for childcare. Why can't we go back to the early release pre-COVID schedule? I thought the half-day schedule was only during the heat of COVID to do extra cleaning, but now the new proposed early release is supposed to be for the teachers to learn the new math curriculum. How can professional development be accomplished in one hour a week? How long does it take educated professionals to learn a new math curriculum? Why is it taking so long? Parents were under the impression that the PD's, the PD days were for math professional development, but we are now finding out that that isn't the case. Is it possible to receive a list of the PD's schedule? Thank you.
All right, going once, going twice. All right, we will move on. Approval of school board calendar.
Is that the, Phyllis, is this the time for the school board meeting calendar or the school district calendar? Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you very much. I just didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that I'm looking at the right one before we do this. There's two calendars on the agenda. One is the school board meeting calendar, and that's what we're asking you to approve, which is the same format as it has been for the last five years. I will, I just want to note that we're in a weird cycle with the annual calendar with the way that the, can you hear me okay, Gordon? Is Jamie okay?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay, when it's too close, it sounds really loud to me. God knows, I don't need to be any louder than I already am. The calendar is unusual because of the way that the holidays lay out this year, this current school year, next year, and the year after. So for example, if you look at March, the February vacation is normally the last week of February, but because of the way the holidays lay out, it's the first, the last two days of February and the first three days of March. That happens, we actually looked it up for a couple of years to see when this weirdness would end, and it ends after next year, we think. But we just, I just want people to pay attention to the calendar because it is, it is odd where Thanksgiving falls, where the winter holiday break falls, where the February break falls, and where the April break falls. So just please pay attention, and you'll note that the, that also upsets a little bit the budget process calendar. So we actually had to move the meeting in March for the school board to the 20 So we actually had to move the meeting in March for the school board to the twenty second. Because we are anticipating that the voting is the second Tuesday of March, which is the fourteenth this year.
All right.
It's bizarre. So just, just don't, it, it does lay out almost exactly the same. But because of the way that those, the end of March, February and April are, it's just a little odd. So yeah, and for example, in November, you'll have three board meetings in November, but one in December. But really, the first, the third one in November is your first December meeting. But in order to meet the deadlines for the, the budget process, we had to put it on the thirtieth of November because that was a Wednesday.
So do we have one on November thirtieth and December first?
No.
That's what it says.
No, December fir-, oh, that's, that's a typo. That's the budget committee. Sorry, that needs to be fixed, thank you Dawn. Um, so that should be.
I'm just trying not to have back to back meetings.
No, 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 thank you. Um, so that we'll, we'll fix the typo, the typo is, um, thank you for bringing it up. There is a school board meeting on November second. Uh, that's a joint meeting where I'll present the budget. There is a meeting on the seventeenth, which is a joint meeting with the budget committee where we answer the questions. Right, just like we've always done. And then on the thirtieth, the board will meet to deliberate the budget. And then the December first meeting is, is actually a budget committee meeting to deliberate the budget. And then we have a couple of other meetings in there if, if needed in December in the budget calendar. But your official board meeting would be the, the thirtieth and the fourteenth, which is technically your December meetings. So I just wanted to explain why it's so weird. It was just the way that the, and of course, the DRA hasn't released the dates formally yet, we're just anticipating based on previous years.
Dawn.
Yes.
Um, so I think we had the same situation last year with April. We've got meetings week to week.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because he's on vacation the week before our kids are on vacation.
Remember I live in. Nineteenth, is that?
He's gone.
You're gone?
That's why we usually do it the week before.
Yep, and it's the same for February, Jim.
Okay.
But in February, it's even more weird because of the winter vacation.
Right.
So we, we tried our best to line it up as tight as possible, but it is really, really, really unusual with the way the calendar is laying out these couple of years. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, so, um.
So their last meeting. And the meeting in February is the fifteenth, and then the next meeting is one, two, three, five weeks away, March twenty second. Is there a reason why we wouldn't meet on the eighth as well? This year, we had several weeks between our last meeting and this meeting, and there were vendors that didn't get paid because there were manifests that we weren't here to sign and.
Yep.
I think that, I just am wondering why we wouldn't meet on the eighth.
We certainly can, it's not, um, typically we meet one, once in March, so we mirrored what we've always done.
I don't think that's, I think this year we did met once in March, but I don't recall that's a regular thing.
I think normally what happens is that the first is on Tuesday and the deliberative is on the seventh. And then we meet the week after for the, for this meeting, the organizational meeting. But because the calendar is so long, we could certainly add a meeting there if you feel like you'd like to.
I mean, five weeks is a long time.
Yeah.
Without meeting.
That's perfectly fine.
Manifests.
Yep. That's fine.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just mirrored the, the, what we've had in the past, so we're happy to make adjustments and add a meeting there. And it could just be a brief meeting for the purpose of taking care of general business, that's fine.
Yep.
So Phyllis, why don't we add, oh, actually, just for the sake of, um, we should probably have a, a motion in a second and then amend the calendar. To add a meeting on the eighth, just for the process reasons.
We'll have to do that and we'll also have to make a motion to correct the typo.
Yeah, yeah, act, yeah, that's fine, we can do that. We'll, we'll, we'll just remove the, the, the number one school board meeting because that's actually a budget committee meeting.
Right, okay, fine. Jamie? I saw you had.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I, I, I agree with, uh, Tammy's point, we should schedule that in, but we're working on the, on a motion there, that's fine.
Do you want two separate motions or one motion?
I think you could do it as one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think.
Uh, move to approve the school board calendar with, um, the addition of a meeting on March eighth.
Second.
Any discussion, sorry. All right, roll call vote, Jamie.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Heather.
Aye.
Tammy.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
And myself.
Thank you.
Right, uh, approval acceptance of gift, the commemorative coins.
That's Mister Stack.
So we had a community member reach out to me that has a family member that has a large collection of commemorative NASA coins. And I mean, probably a couple hundred coins in all, all different kinds. And the wishes of this community member were that we use these over the next few years when we give out academic awards. So with your permission, we would accept this donation, we would make up a little card that would go with each one of the coins that says these are donated from this community member. Congratulations for all your efforts. They would go up to guidance and guidance would use them as they see fit, probably at the end of the year when we're giving out. Different either senior awards or, I don't know, I'm gonna let, I'll let the guidance folks figure out what makes the most sense. We also might save some specifically for some of the aviation classes to use for things there. There, there are some pretty cool ones, I mean, the John Glenn, the Apollo missions, just, I think he collected them for thirty or, thirty or so years, it's pretty cool.
I just want to say, I, I saw them, I looked them over. I wanted to buy one. They are really, really cool. So if you'd like to see them, uh, checking in with Mister Stack or maybe you could bring them to another meeting just to show the board, they are, they're really cool.
Yeah, they're sitting on my desk, I can bring them down, you can look through them while this meeting's going on if you want.
Solid gold and they pay off the budget?
Uh, you know, I don't know, you gotta bite into them and check, I don't know. But the, uh, the fam, the family that's donate, the family that's donating them actually had a good positive experience years ago. With Sanborn, they hosted an exchange student, so, and the exchange student came here for the year and they were so moved by the experience they had. That when this came up, they thought of us because the, the, the family member that had it doesn't live in the community, but now they have the coins. Trying to live out those wishes, if you catch my drift.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept. Oh, sorry, Jamie?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, to, to say Brian, I'd love to see those when I get back. That I, I think this is such, such a cool thing. Uh, kids will love it, I mean, what, what a fabulous way to distribute a, a collection. Hats off to whoever's doing this, wonderful. And I'd love to see them before they get distributed.
Yeah, we, we definitely will, Jamie, and that was why I wanted to have the little card that would live with the coins. Cause we may use those, it may take us a period of two or three years and I don't want anybody to forget where they came from. It's, it's pretty neat, I'll bring them down actually after this, just so you could, you could check them out during your meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so it looks like, uh, they're, the collector was William Kelly. And they were donated by Kathleen Kelly.
And there is a dollar amount, I think, I don't remember exactly what the amount was.
Around a thousand.
One thousand?
Around a thousand.
Yeah.
So we are very grateful for this very generous donation. I make a motion to accept the donation? Absolutely. So I have a second?
Second.
You can fight it out with the two of them. All right, um, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very, very much. Um, approval of overnight field trip, um, high school key club, Mister Stack, you're up again.
Yep, I don't have the details in front of it though, in, in front of me, this is the key club one, it's actually the same trip that we've taken. Several different years now in a row, pre-COVID to Springfield, it's a great opportunity for the kids. Get some leadership experience and kind of learn from some of their peers doing similar work with key clubs and other service organizations in New England. So if it's all right by the board, we would operate pretty much the same way that we did pre-COVID as it's written there.
Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? All right, uh, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, uh, approval and signature of MS twenty two.
Okay, so, um, this is the MS twenty two form, it's called the Report of Appropriations Actually Voted. It's a required form that we do each and every year and it's due twenty days after the, uh, the district meeting. What it does is it summarizes all the warrant articles that were approved by the voters by, um, major line item and location. And all I need you guys to do is approve it and sign it, and then I'm gonna submit it to the DRA. All right.
We need a motion and we need a motion and a vote?
Yeah, yes, please.
All right.
Need a motion to approve and then.
Jamie?
Yeah, just a question for, uh, for Matt, um, do you need all signatures? Uh, cause I can't get in there till Monday or is a quorum sufficient?
Just a quorum.
Thank you.
But I think you might be back in time because it says twenty days, so I think you might be.
Yeah, I can swing in on Monday and sign, that's fine.
Twenty days from when?
The, the day of, um.
Voting. Voting.
Voting.
Oh, okay.
So I think, I think he still has time.
Yeah.
So, all right, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Can borrow your pen again and I'll sign it and then I can pass it around. Um, internet service provider contracts, Gordon?
Good evening. So over the last couple of weeks, I have been through a bidding process for our internet services. Um, both are up as of, uh, June thirtieth. Um, so I'd like to share with you, um. The best results in my opinion, um, of the bidding and what I'd like to move forward with, um, within the district. Um, we have two different services, one is our normal internet. And then we also have our ENS service which connects the buildings, um, to each other. So first, I'd like to go over the internet, um, currently. Um, it's very. Updated speeds considering, you know, the school buildings. Um, the high school has a hundred fifty meg internet line. Memorial and Baking, the same, and then the SAU, when we went to the new building, we were able to get a gig speed there. Um, currently we're paying eleven hundred and seventy eight dollars a month. For those four lines, which equals out to about fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty five dollars. The new proposed internet is actually with consolidated, going fiber into the buildings. Um, and this is for one gig download and upload for each building. The total cost is one thousand, one hundred and sixty eight dollars for fourteen thousand and fourteen dollars a year. Which saves a monthly savings of ten dollars and two cents, yearly savings, hundred twenty dollars and twenty four cents. Basically what this provides us is the internet is seven times faster download speed and forty times faster upload speed for Memorial and Baking, which is huge.
It's phenomenal.
Um, internet speed at the SAU stays the same, but the upload speed is twenty times faster than what we currently have. And then at the high school, it provides a dual gigabit internet line for load balancing redundancy and failover for all the other schools and the SAU office. So with the Comcast side, which is what we currently use for our ENS and our EDI circuits. Um. We're currently at. Five hundred meg download and upload for the high school, now the high school is the only location that has this particular line. And I'd like to move it up to a gig, so double the speed. And what this does is with the consolidated line allows us to have two identical speed lines, allows us to load balance all the traffic. Which basically doubles, you know, or overdoubles what we currently have now at the high school, middle school. With the ENS connection, which is what connects the schools all together, so they can just talk direct. Currently, the, uh, the high school has a nine hundred meg connection, which equals Memorial, Baking and SAU total. You have to have them combined being the main site here at the high school with the servers, they have to combine. So with that, we have Memorial at five hundred meg, because at the time we had the old middle school, um, right next door. And then baking and SAU were two hundred meg. We currently pay five thousand, three hundred and sixty three dollars for a total of sixty four thousand, three hundred and fifty nine a year. The new proposed. Is moving all of the buildings to one gig, except the high school, middle school, we moved to three gig because we have to match all the other locations. And basically that total comes to with the EDI internet line, the additional one at the high school that, you know, we currently have now. A total of four thousand, four hundred and eighty seven a month. Or fifty three thousand, eight hundred and forty four a year, which is a eight hundred and seventy six dollars savings a month. And a ten thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars savings a year. Between the two, it's a total of. Ten thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars a year savings. We have a couple one-time costs mainly because of the switch to consolidated for the internet. It's gonna be about a hundred twenty nine dollars per building. Um, I don't know if this building will require that one-time fee because we do have consolidated for our phones right now. The, uh, only other cost would be, I need, uh, some transceivers to, to handle the over gig speed for the ENS here. So we have two firewalls, I need two transceivers at five hundred and seventy nine dollars apiece, so eleven hundred and fifty eight. So for a total one-time cost about sixteen hundred dollars. Um. Everything is eligible for E-rate funding. I unfortunately didn't have the contracts to show you guys today. Um, they haven't sent them to me yet, but I need them by Wednesday submitted in order to be eligible for the E-rate funding. So this is why I had to present it to you today. Um, if you'd like to see them, I can, I can share them when I get them. Um. And yeah, that's what I got.
Jim?
So, um, Gordon, other than the, the switch that you were talking about and those associated costs. Is there, are there any other infrastructure costs associated?
With this, no.
No, okay.
No, other, um, consolidated, we have to get them to get the lines, you know, into the building. You know, that's the one twenty nine cost. The additional is just, you know, the, the hardware we currently have, the firewalls, it can't handle that highest speed. So it's a special module that goes into the firewall to be able to handle the handoff from their equipment.
And wireless routers?
What's that?
Wireless routers, modems, do they, is that included with, I mean, I have consolidated it, but that's at home.
Correct.
Provide the router.
Correct, so with the consolidated internet, it's just like that, so I factored that into the price. Nine, nine dollars a month for each building.
Fiber optic?
Correct. Yep, so everywhere is gonna be completely fiber optic for internet. And, um, here, we're gonna have two different carriers, so if one goes down, you know, we, we have a totally different carrier to, to still use. You know, and then if, uh, say consolidated goes down at the SAU office, what happens is the internet gets routed through the Comcast ENX, ENS connection. And then goes out the high school, middle school, high school, middle school internet connection. So we can use here as a backup internet for all the sites. So we have basically, currently right now, we, we use here as the backup for all of them. But in reality, I could send, you know, Memorial's internet traffic out Baking's internet if I had to. You know, so basically any of the buildings can, can be redirected.
So better services, redundancy, less cost.
Correct. Three-year, three-year commitment and, you know, it's, it's a little, I don't want to say overkill right now because it's not. Really, you know, internet, you know, definitely, we, we should have never been this low at speeds. It's ridiculous that I have a gig speed at home and, you know, a whole elementary school has a hundred fifty meg. You know, my internet at home shouldn't be four times greater, five times greater than a whole school. You know, so that, that needed to be done 100%. With the ENS connection, the, the way I'm trying to consolidate stuff here, it may not be needed, you know, this high right now, but in a year, probably. You know? So just we get it in place and then it just, it works with the plan.
Jamie?
Yeah, I have a question and a comment. Gordon, what are the ramifications of this change with the wireless requirements from the schools? We've been talking about during the course of the year that we're going to have to upgrade our wireless. What are the ramifications to what we're going to want to do with wireless with this new system?
Totally. Um, I don't want to say separate because obviously they're from, you know, a wireless connection. They're using an access point to get out to the internet. But in reality, I mean, it's, it's only going to improve their speeds. You know, when they're connected to the wireless. So in reality, they're not, they're not really, you know, one doesn't affect the other so much in, in this aspect. You know, so, so the biggest thing that, you know, we get are like the upload speeds. Right now, the upload speeds are, are horrible. And that's what you get with coax cable from Comcast. So for example, last year was it last 20, 2021 school year? The entire school year I had Bakey, SAU and Memorial routing down to the high school and using the fiber line at the high school because we couldn't get more than three Zoom calls running at one time because the upload speeds were just so bad. So with things, more and more things moving to the cloud, we need, we need the upload speed, you know, to be there.
And the comment that I'd make in, in case anybody didn't notice it or for people at home, we're looking at the last couple of months at a CPI of about seven to seven and a half percent year-over-year of price increases. The producer price index was about 10%. One of the things that there's a huge shortage on, so significant price pressure in the marketplace is chips, electronics. So to be able to come in and give us these types of improvements at pricing below what we had this year in the face of those type of inflationary pressures, I just wanted to say that that's a nice job. Uh, and I fully support this.
Thank you. And I'm, and I'm actually hoping that it's, I'm a little high because one, one factor I don't know is tax. And I basically went off of what we're paying existing and tack that on there. So I'm hoping that, you know, a lower cost per month will drop the taxes a little bit. So I'm hoping that I might be a couple hundred dollars a month higher than, you know, on, on my sheet here than what we actually are.
I think you said three-year term?
Three-year term.
And the, the price increases?
No price increase throughout the, yep. It's all the, all the same price route.
And I, and I would agree with Jamie. I think job well done.
Yeah, thank you. And I'd, I'd like to mention too, with the E-rate funding. So this allows us eligible with the E-rate funding being in a contract with a service provider. And part of why I needed to present this to you today is because the filing deadline is Wednesday of next week. And basically what that gives us is I did the math. It's around 15 to 20% of our yearly bill funded back to us. So on top of, you know, you see the total yearly price of $67,859 for all the services combined. And then we get, you know, say 15% back credited to us from the E-rate grant, federal grant.
So I'll move to approve.
Really? Second. All right. Any further discussion? All right.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should they vote?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Oh, thanks. Yeah.
Uh, Jamie?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I make one comment and it's separate. I, I just wanted to make sure that the public understands that in my budget presentation, there were three items that needed to be addressed soon and that we would be discussing them at least at the end of the year, if not sooner. Uh, one was the track. The other is the auditorium. The auditorium has significant technology needs and other needs. And the internet wireless connectivity. This is not the wireless connectivity. This is the internet access and the speed that goes to the connectivity. So Gordon will be bringing us a proposal and I just didn't, when it comes up later, why are we talking about wireless again? I didn't want anyone to be confused. So I just wanted to talk about, this is about getting the internet into the building. What the proposal and the, the concern that Gordon has is that our actual routers that Jim brought up, the, the wireless system itself is going to need significant upgrades. Did I get that right, Gordon?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. This is basically our, our connection out to the world and the wireless is basically what allows the devices to connect to the connection to go out to the world.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to approval of academic calendar 22, 23.
Great. Um, uh, I'd like to invite Dr. Haynes and the four administrators to come up to the mic and talk about kind of what's happened. We have done a survey of staff and we have done some reflection over the last few weeks about this matter. And I think it's, I, I'll summarize just so that people know where we're at. We, so if you rewind, we had, Dr. Haynes, how many early release days this year?
Twenty-four. It's 24.
24. Can you come up to the mic, Dr. Haynes? So Dr. Haynes and I have been talking a lot with staff and administrators and working collaboratively to figure out a solution. So we had 24 early release days this year and in, can you just kind of refresh everyone about what happened this year?
Sure. So we had early release days on Wednesday for two hours on the weeks that had five days. So Thanksgiving week, because we have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off, there wasn't an early release on a day where if you had Veterans Day, we would not have had an early release on that Wednesday. So that's how we ended up with two dozen early release days. And those early release times were used for a lot of different things, whether it was, um, I know that Ms. Lanville had mentioned the math training that we were adopting. We had all of our elementary teachers go through responsive classroom training. We had secondary teachers focused on content area, um, work that they were doing in their buildings. There were a lot of different things happening in the buildings and still are, still will be.
Not to mention NIASC and the upcoming curriculum work that we need to do.
Exactly. Yep.
Okay. And then, and, and so we did a, so just to kind of go through process, we got feedback from parents that it was really confusing knowing which week you had early release, when you did and didn't have it. And then we also received feedback from parents that, um, it was too long, that two hours is a really long time to figure out what to do with children, particularly the younger kids, K5, K6. The, so we, we proposed originally to do, the administrative team and I met with Dr. Haynes and we tried to find a middle ground because we have to do our NIASC accreditation next year. It is a significant process. We need to align the curriculum. We are changing our grading, probably. We're doing surveys about that. We have significant work to do on, um, our intervention program that we are now finally implementing, which is currently because the board allowed us to hire teachers and combine parapositions is currently very close to being completely filled, not completely filled. So we are really starting to get things up and running.
And we are in the middle of finishing up selection for the middle, high school math program.
That's right.
So there's going to be associated training for how to use the components for the program that we select. So that's in addition to all of the regular work that our teachers do during early release times, which would be to meet, to talk about student needs, to meet, to talk about, um, new initiatives that are coming through. We had mentioned at the beginning of the year, this year, that because of additional state mandated training for our staff, that we now have nine entire hours of training that is mandated by the state. Things like child abuse training, suicide training, things like that, that our staff have to complete in order for us to be able to function and, and stay in good standing with the Department of Education.
So, so we, we brought to you the one hour early release and we got feedback that people weren't happy with that. Some people, and I want to be clear, it was not like a, a deluge of email. It was 15 or 20 emails. Totally fine. We went back to the table again and put together a, a proposal for two hours once a month. And we talked about what will we do if we do the two hours once a month? So we're bringing to you tonight the concern that the staff were surveyed and the staff reported, it was exactly what I expected it to be. It was a 50/50 split. 53% want the early release once a week and 47% wanted the early release, um, two hours once a month. So it was very, very close. And the, the reality is, is that the administrative team feels, and they're, they're here to share with you what the impact for their building. Because if we don't have the early release once a week, which I, I want to put to rest this message that one hour a week is not enough. I don't agree with that. We back our staff meetings up to two of those hours every month. So you get a two-hour meeting every, every other week. And the one-hour meeting is focused on, um, the initiative that is being talked about in the other two hours. So it's all linked. It's not, I trust my team to use that time effectively. I just want to be clear about that. That is, if we didn't feel like an hour was enough, we wouldn't ask for it, right? We're not going to ask you for something that we think is ineffective. May not be effective at other districts. But I'm certainly comfortable with this team making the use of, good use of the time that you give them. Also, if they're super clever, they'll make their master schedules so that it builds up to some of those one hours so teachers could meet. Anyway, there's lots of clever ways to do things to make more time, but the hour makes a big difference. Mr. Stack is literally a master at those types of schedules. So I think it's really important to, to recognize that we're kind of stuck because we, we, we have all this work that we need to get done. We have plenty of instructional hours in terms of the number of minutes. So when people say, oh, well, it's taking away from our children's education, we are still hundreds of hours over the minimum state requirement. We, we have school days, the maximum length and the maximum number of school days. We're required to provide 990 hours of education. We are hundreds of hours over that. So the number of hours that the, the, it's like 40 hours that the early release day would give us per week. You know, one hour a week times what, 40 weeks or 40 some odd weeks. It's, it's not impacting the instruction. We have talked about, um, the YMCA program. And I believe that Mr. McCluskey, were you looking up the cost and, and you were going to talk about that? But the real problem is that when I brought back, so when we slowed things down, which was the right thing to do, and we asked for staff input, the input was, I don't know how we're going to get this all done if we don't have the early releases. So we talked about that. Let's say that we didn't want the board to feel boxed in or in a corner. So we talked about what would we do if the board votes not to have one hour early releases? We would hire substitute teachers and release teachers. We have to have the time to work with people. We can't do this without having them work on curriculum in a, in a connected way. So then the students don't have their teachers in their classrooms during that time, and that is costly. It's $130 a day per person times four or five people to, to do release time during the day. It also is dependent on whether or not the subs are available, which we all know has been a significant problem.
And is that four or five people per building or?
Well, we would schedule it so that it was staggered so that we could have, like if Bakey has four first grade teachers, we'd release them for a half day. And then we might have second grade for the second half of the day. Or we'd just release the first grade for the whole day, depending on the bulk or the, the nature of the work. The second idea is that we try to pay teachers to work after school to do curriculum alignment work and just pay them hourly. But the problem with that is we can't mandate it by contract. We can only offer it. So it's not like a business where I can say you need to work late Thursday night and we're going to pay you extra. We have to, we have to follow the contract. So I think it's really important to recognize that we do have strategies to implement and we respect the will of the board on this matter. If you tell us that we can't have an hour early release each week, we, we understand. It's, this isn't easy for us either. I, I think that it's really important to note that, that for, for me personally, the argument that other districts in the area don't have this, I don't really care what other districts are doing because they're not us. I've had early release in my district where my kids grew up every Wednesday for at least an hour, sometimes two. I raised my kids that way. We just dealt with it. It is what it is. We're not, we're not, um, we have to get this work done. It's critical. And we're going to get it done one way or the other. I just think that that one hour early release makes the most sense for consistency. I, I, I want the teachers at the table having these conversations collaborative. That's my opinion. So I'm going to let the four, the three principals and Patty speak about their buildings and their impacts before you deliberate so that you hear their point of view.
I guess I lost the nose game, so I'll go first from the high school end. I just want folks to know, especially folks in the audience and listening that may not be familiar with how we use the time. We're not bringing trainers in for a lot of this time. When we need team time, it's really so our team can collaborate on the teaching and learning pieces. There's four parts to that that we focus on. We want our teachers thinking the same way about what it is they want kids to know and be able to do. It's your competencies and standards. How are you going to know when they've learned it? So that's looking at your assessments and rubrics and making sure that you have a calibrated approach to what it means to master a topic or exceed a topic. And then the last two things are, what are we going to do for the kids who are struggling? And what are we going to do for the kids who already get it? Those are things that it, it's an ongoing discussion for our teachers to be thinking through that. Cause throughout the year, the curriculum, there's, there's many aspects to the curriculum and the assessments that we're using. We've got teachers coming in and coming off the team. We have kids' needs that are different. So I liken it to a little league baseball team. If you were to tell them, you're only going to practice before the season, and then once the season starts, you're just going to play games. Your team's not going to be that good because you haven't taken the time to have practice and calibrate. Well, that's our team time. That's exactly what we need to have. Prior to COVID, prior to a lot of the reorganization at the high school, we were able to have a schedule which allowed for all of our teachers to have an hour a week built into the school day so that they could meet. We were larger. We weren't sharing a lot of resources. It was easier to pull that off in a schedule. But as we get smaller, which is just the reality of where we're at, in order to offer the opportunities that we need to for our kids, we just have more limitations on our schedule. We don't have the ability to schedule the math teachers so that they're all off the same period. And the English teachers, so they're all off the same period. Just doesn't exist. So we have to find that time in another way. Last thing I'll say is this, I, it, we have about a thousand different iterations of a potential bell schedule for next year. We're getting a lot closer. A lot of them look very similar. Here's what I'll tell you about the potential bell schedule at the high school that has a one-hour Wednesday early release versus what we're running now, which has a two-hour Wednesday release. You would think from an instructional minute standpoint, they're off by exactly an hour, but they're actually only off by half an hour. So I just want you to keep that in mind. And there's two reasons for that. One is that we were actually releasing kids two hours and 10 minutes early at the high school because of our SST program starting at 12, the school day would end at 12 instead of 2:10. So now we're only doing a one-hour release from a two-hour and 10-minute. The other way that we make up a little bit of time is because we're running two fewer classes. That's two fewer passing periods happening during the day. So when you put those together, we're actually from an instructional minute standpoint, only off by a half an hour instead of a full hour. So just keep that in the back of your mind when you map that out over the course of the year, when you're thinking. And Jamie, I do have a spreadsheet if you want the data as my friend. You and I, we're like spreadsheet buddies. So just.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Ryan McCluskey from Memorial School. I just wanted to touch on a couple of, couple of different points. I'm, um, one of the co-chairs for the steering committee for NIESC, so I thought it may make sense to just touch base about what that process and the time commitments may look like for the next about year and a half or so. We're pretty early in the process right now. You know, our committees are coming together. We're just getting data back from our surveys. And what we're doing right now is we're getting ready to dive into what's going to be called the self-reflection phase of the NIESC reaccreditation process. And that's going to take quite a bit of time through this spring and through the early portion of next fall, when we will host, um, a team of, I believe, nine members, um, who will be coming for a collaborative conference visit. And they'll be in the district for two days. They'll be reviewing that self-reflection. They'll be in the schools and the classrooms. And, um, they're going to provide some feedback based on that self-reflection that we provide to them as well as their observations. We will then put together a school growth or improvement plan based on that feedback. And that, again, that's another collaborative. And that, again, that's another collaborative process where we're going to be getting needing teams to come together and needing people to be able to collaborate. And that will be eventually followed up about a year and a half from now with a decennial visit. And that'll be the final phase of that. But there's, there's quite a bit of heavy lifting and time commitment across the district and community, to be perfectly honest, because we're really trying to get all stakeholders to be involved with that. So those are time commitments that go beyond teams needing to come together and calibrate and work together on teaching and learning. The other piece is, Mr. Ambrose asked me to just touch base with the YMCA program, which offers before and after care for the both Bakey and the Memorial Schools. And I was able to just speak with them and just kind of get a, a sense of where they stand right now. How much, how many openings they may have at this point and kind of what the costs associated with that may look like next year. Right now, they have a capacity for forty five students per school. And they're running at about half capacity. And that, you know, that fluctuates on a given day, you know, so Tuesdays may be busier than Wednesdays or Wednesdays may be busier than Thursdays. But they said on a given day, they have somewhere around twenty spots open, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. And that's contingent on them having the full space that we offered them in the building. So for example, at Memorial School, they have the cafeteria and gym. If I schedule an after school program to take up half the gym, then they only have half the space. They have half the capacity. So it would be contingent on the schools making sure that they don't double book the space at the Y is needs or is able to use. So they said that they do have room to grow as far as if there are needs between the two communities. It may not work for every family, but but there is an option out there. The cost associated with a family choosing to be part of the Y program for one or two days a week is forty five dollars. And they said, you know, between staffing and different things, you know, they they meet each year and and figure out whether or not those numbers will stay the same. So that's this year's number. It may change next year, but there is room for families to participate in the Y program on a Wednesday afternoon.
Is that forty five dollars per week?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hello. Sorry. Matt Malilla, middle school principal. Try not to repeat anything that, you know, Mr. McCluskey, Mr. Sack said. So you know, from the middle school perspective, we have a lot going on. We're adding sixth grade teachers. So and you know, we're piloting some math programs this year. So those sixth grade teachers are going to need to be, you know, working with our current middle school math teachers to really to to develop that program and implement it fully. And, you know, this, I know this has been stated several times, but we have a lot going on in the next, well, more than twelve months. And between NIESK and the curriculum work is massive. And I've been in a neighboring district, district where we did significant curriculum work, actually less than this. We had no. There were no, there's no PLC time and very few early release days, and it was a struggle. It was not completed well. It was done really kind of shoddy, and we need the time to do this. Well, it's critical that we get the curriculum and the assessments and everything done well the first time, because if you don't, it's just, it's not, it's not a good thing. So it's really all I have to add. But, you know, I'm excited. We're getting the sixth grade. I think it's it's going to make the middle school complete. I think it's going to allow us to really develop a strong program all around, not just academically, but, you know, extracurricular and co-curricular. So I think it's a good thing, but it's going to be a lot of work and we're up for it, but we just, just need the time.
Mr. Malilla, what will you do for? One of the things that came up this year that that I was a little worried about that I wanted to problem solve, and I know we can problem solve some things once we know what the plan is. But if students have athletic or a- after school activities on the early release day, can we figure out a way to give them a place to be at the high school until they go to those activities? Because like going, going home and then coming back in an hour is really challenging.
Absolutely. We have eight or nine clubs now. We've got the money in the budget in the in the club line. We can develop something. I mean, it could be a homework club. It could be a science. It could be something, you know, there are a lot of choices, a lot of things out there.
So we can figure out a plan for.
We can figure something out. Absolutely. If it's just, if it's just an hour, absolutely. Yep.
Okay. It's a lot easier than two hours. Okay.
I think the gentlemen have covered just about everything. There's nothing more to say, but with that said, I could answer questions that the board members might have about any of those topics.
Jim?
Just a couple of things. I'd like some more clarity on how you came up with the forty hours that you would need. That's what Tom summarized it at. Is that Ambrose math?
It kind of is. It kind of is. Yeah.
Really, Jim, we were trying to, it, look, it, it's going to be a combination of, of the forty hours isn't the only time that we're going to be doing this work. So we we will have to use the October PD day. We'll use the March PD day. The two PD days at the beginning of the year are pretty much tied up with opening activities. So people, they're labeled as professional development days, but they're really school opening preparation days. So the way that we came up with the forty hours is that we, we felt that we could between, even with that forty hours, we may need to do some release time and some outside of school paid time. But we figured that this was a fair middle ground based on the feedback from the community. And the two things that we thought needed to be considered in that middle ground were the frequency. So in other words, people were saying it's really hard to have a school meet, a meeting on Monday or or have one early release one week on Wednesday and not the next week. It's just too confusing. So we felt that by doing it consistently for an hour and augmenting it with the staff meetings, that we could probably get quite a bit done, but we're, we're going to be asking teachers to come in this summer to write curriculum too. And pay them during the summer as well. I mean, we're, it's all hands on deck now because we're, we're trying to get this curriculum line and get things ready to go.
Well, that's the other part of my question. So we've been talking about curriculum a lot for years, and we've talked about it a lot more recently. And we know that there's a lot of work that wants, that the administration wants to do to align the curriculum vertically and horizontally. But in a lot of cases, that's just being started. So and Mr. Stack said, part of the collaboration is the teachers getting together and determining what it is we want the kids to know. So without that curriculum, how do, what does that, how does that work? What gets done?
It's just I can talk about that for the high school.
So it's not, you know, it's, it's not that we don't have curriculum. It's more of a, we don't have curriculum written down in the same place in the same way. So there is, there is curriculum. It's, it's been an agreed upon curriculum that the team is using, but that it looks, it looks different. It's set up different team by team. And what we're trying to do is, is, is have a uniform look to all of it so that we can do a better job mapping it out across the different grade levels. And we've kind of gone away from that over the years. That was work that started probably. Well, we lost two years with COVID, but five or six years ago, there was always, it was, it was a written curriculum with ongoing review every year. There was a curriculum cycle. And when I got here on the board, that was a well-established board committee that would meet and review different things every year. So it's, it's not that it's not there. It really is just trying to bring it back, realign it, and make sure it's written the same way. Does that make sense?
Yes. The other piece of that is as we get further along in adopting new programs, bringing on a math program, we're going to start to see, well, if third grade's responsible for this, then fourth grade should be responsible for this next thing. So that we get, and that's where you're talking about the vertical alignment. So to have teachers sit down and and some of those conversations are very basic about this test was supposed to be about fractions and they're not getting this. What are they missing? So those conversations need to happen as well. So that's where a lot of what Brian also spoke about goes to, what do we want them to know? Well, if you gave them a test and it's adding fractions, and that's what you want them to know, and they're struggling with that, what are we going to do about that?
So just to follow up on that. So when you guys are talking about we, you're talking about the people who are developing or defining the curriculum. But then there's the point where the teachers then get involved. And they work on how it's going to, how they're going to deliver that curriculum across the grade, right?
So that's the instruction piece.
So before you have the piece that the administration is doing, what are you doing with the teacher's part of it? It's kind of like a chicken and egg kind of a thing. Unless you have enough for the first several months.
Oh, I, I.
Yeah. Well, that's what's happening between now and what Tom had referred to earlier and getting things done by July first. There, there is a plan. I have put together a very aggressive plan. And like Mr. Malilla was saying, we, we've got pedal to the metal now. It's very aggressive and the teachers are going to be doing some work. I'm going to be guiding them. I'm going to be working with Christine DeRosa. I'm going to be working with Donna Danelle. We're going to be working to get this done so that we have frameworks in place. From those frameworks, it's like when you build a house, if you don't have a foundation, forget what you want to put in the bedroom because we don't even have a foundation. I don't care, honey, if you really like those drapes. We don't even have windows yet. So we, we need to get the foundation done. So once the foundation is done, we can continue moving forward with that. And as you get, just like when you build a house, the house frame goes up and things get more and more complicated. You don't just live in a framed house. Now you're putting in walls. You're putting on siding. You're putting in windows. Inside, you're choosing paint colors, wallpaper, carpeting. It gets more and more complicated. So we're, we're lying, we're lying down the foundation in that very aggressive timeframe that I've developed.
So my final question is, when does the forty hours start?
Oh, oh, don't, please don't think that the only time that this work is happening is during the forty hours.
Yeah.
It's not that simple.
Okay.
It, it's starting now.
Okay.
We're Thursday, Friday. Middle school is working on curriculum alignment Friday over the summer. We, we have a number of days at the end of the year because of snow days that will be dead. We started three weeks ago.
Okay.
When the board asked us to focus or when we had some conversations about things that we'll be discussing more at the next ISO meeting. So I want to be clear, this is all linked. In order to have strong instruction, you have to have a planned and clearly articulated viable curriculum. We have it in some areas better than others, but it's not consistent across the district. We want to put it all in a consistent format that will then be shared publicly so that you as a parent could look it up and see what is my third grade student supposed to be doing in October this year? Then we have to work on the assessments that go with that. And I just want to make sure everyone understands, this isn't the administration writing this. It's the teachers working in collaboration. Everything we do from this point forward is we, not I or me. It goes right back to my comments in my superintendent's report. If we aren't working on a common goal of helping these kids be successful, we're wasting our energy. And the first step is to align the curriculum. The second step is to make sure that we have solid assessments. The third step is to have teachers working in collaboration to figure out when, what went right or wrong in each unit and each assessment, and then make decisions about how to change instruction or refer kids to the intervention program that you all created. So that it's a real, there's way more to this. The, the one hour once a week back, and I want to be clear, it's not one hour once a week. It's forty hours plus all the two, the one hour staff meetings, which is two a month. So it's really six hours a month.
Plus any of the time that they're using during the week during any of their regularly scheduled planning periods. The thing about having the early release time that makes it the golden nugget for us is that everybody in the building is doing the same thing at the same time. We're not worried about somebody just fell down the stairs. I've got to go cover lunch duty. I've got a phone call. These teachers can't come in to talk about special education needs because they're dealing with something else. Everybody is minds on, hands on. We're all moving it together. And I said it earlier in a meeting this week, we can go slow to go fast. And when we build capacity and everybody is thinking about the same thing, you all start thinking the same way. You all start using the same language. Suddenly things get moving a little faster. So there's a lot of synergy and there's a lot of sort of motivation to get things moving because you start feeding off of each other. That's the golden nugget about this early release.
So last comment. So you made the, the, you used the example of building a house.
Yep.
When you build something, you have a project timeline.
Yep.
Do you guys currently have a timeline?
I gave one to Tom this morning at nine o'clock. So that was the timeline, right. That's the timeline to finish to June or July first. You have a strategic plan that you're going to be receiving on Friday that lays out additional tasks and milestones and timelines. So all of that stuff that's in the strategic plan that is in that section one under student achievement is tied into this.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Yeah, a number of comments here and concerns. I understand from talking with parents and just having spent a lot of time down at the transfer station and this topic coming up again and again. There's a lot of concern in the, in the district about once a week, one hour. I also have concerns about loss of staff meetings. In my experience, in order to run an organization, you need staff meetings. It's eliminating staff meetings so we could bump them up and do this at the same time and expand from one hour to two hours twice a month instead of our staff meetings. I've heard just in this discussion, we have an awful lot to do. There's an awful lot on our plate. We have curriculum. We have new grading systems. We have NASDAQ accreditation. We have new math coming for the middle school. We have the facilities activities that have to be done. We have a new a new five year plan, and then we're going to be into the budgets in the fall also. I don't know how we keep that together as a management team without staff meetings to make sure that things are going as they're supposed to be going. I've never seen that done in the business world, that there aren't staff meetings in order to drive the activity of an organization. So I'm not in favor of just giving up those staff meetings. We have too much on the plate that needs to be organized and coordinated in order to make sure that we get what we're looking for. Mr. Ambrose also mentioned that there was a, we, we have significant hours over and above the nine hundred and ninety necessary. I would be more inclined, and I think it would be far better time spent, more efficient time spent. And I mentioned this when we had this discussion in the last meeting. If we had more time off together. So for example, right now, we're saying two hours once a month. It would seem to me that we could be much more efficient if we did something like three hours once a month or even four hours once a month. We have plenty of hours available. To me, our requirements from the state. My experience has been that when you have significant amount of time, when everybody's together doing the same thing, you can get a lot more mileage than breaking it up. For example, if you went four hours, you get a lot more mileage. Everybody together for four hours. You're doing four different one hour events. Because just the logistics of getting in, sitting down, how you're doing, getting ready and taking your hour, you lose a good part of your hour. When you got four hours together, you can get a lot more. So I would not be in favor for those reasons of the one hour a week and losing the staff meetings. I think staff meetings are critical to keep the district on track with all these different things that everybody just mentioned that are, that are critical to us to achieve. I think you need the staff meetings to do that, and that is different from these professional development activities. And I think the professional development activities would be far more efficient with larger block of time. And if, if parents have to make arrangements for their kids two hours early, then I don't see that being a big difficulty for doing it three or three plus hours early versus a two hours early, rather than just going on the one a week. So those are my thoughts on it. And for those reasons, I, I just think that the staff meetings are critical with everything on the plate and that we can't just do away with those.
I'd like the administration to respond because they're, they're the experts in education in their buildings and they're saying that they're okay with this. So I hear Mr. Fitzpatrick, but I'm not sure they agree.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern, we'll take the hours however we can get them, but my, my biggest concern about having it's not on a regular basis. It's, it's hard to have that consistent, the conversations for calibration because that's on an ongoing basis. Let's give an assessment. Let's see what we get for data. Let's meet next week. Let's look at it. Let's put some interventions in place. So if we do, if we take those four hours and just do them once a month, just think about how that disrupts the cycle. The cycle, it really can't happen in that case. You can talk about the curriculum pieces, but it's the assessment and the what are we doing for kids who need help or who already get it? Those are the pieces we don't do a good enough job getting to. So that's.
About the staff meetings, Brian.
What's that?
Staff meetings.
We give, you know, with the staff meeting time for the high school, it gets used for a lot of different things. Sometimes it goes right back to the teams to do additional work. I am not a fan of holding staff meetings for the sake of holding staff meetings. If it's something that can be sent in an email, we do that. We certainly have some staff meetings that are dedicated for things like our ELO presentations that happen. We certainly have some staff meetings that are dedicated for things like our ELO presentations that happen a couple of times a year. The staff need to be available to be a part of that. This year, we did something different with our staff for a few set staff meeting. We're calling it our Deeper Learning Institute, which is really just a fancy name to say, let's pretend we're having a conference, but we're not going anywhere. We're doing it in-house. But we're going to have some calculated time to sit and talk about teaching and learning in a professional development kind of setting where we do some activities together and people get to work outside of their team. So that has been nice, but that's only probably eight hours over the course of the year that we dedicate to that because again, we want to make sure people have the team time.
Mr. McCluskey, could you speak about the staff meetings? I think Mr. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Fitzpatrick brings up a great point and I want you guys to share what what would you do if you didn't have the normal whole group staff meeting?
Yeah, sure. You know, just echoing Brian real quick, you know, continuity is is a huge piece regardless of whether we're talking about school-based agenda items, whether we're talking about NIESK components of the strategic plan. The continuity is important. You know, we've we looked at a lot of different models. My wife works in a neighboring district that is looking at a model where they have a PD day once every two months. Okay, they're going to get a bunch of time, but I mean, that gap of two months between being able to jump in and out of a particular initiative is is, I mean, it's really hard to get that continuity and I feel like a broken record. I'm using that word a lot right now, but so that is that is certainly something to consider. With regards to the staff meetings, I mean, I don't think that we're proposing a model right now where we'd be eliminating staff meetings from next year's you know, PD calendar. You know, we typically meet generally once a month and like Brian said, you know, I I think across the the district or across the different buildings, the principals don't hold staff meetings for the sake of it. You know, if there are more efficient ways to communicate with the staff, you know, we take care of that, but just collecting my thoughts real quick. But I I do think that our ability to to meet once a month would not be impeded with with the weekly schedule that's being proposed. And if we were able to, you know, just again, dedicate the majority of the time to the these initiatives that we're saying are are critical. And and again, staff meetings don't have to be an hour long. There are there are a lot of different ways to get to the finish line.
So I I do think Jamie brought up some good points, but I also think Jamie's looking at it from a business profit favor reference. So I work in the nonprofit world. I've just went through accreditation where actually we just put in a new intervention model. We've put a lot of things in to our to the therapies and the things that we do. And we did a lot of it in staff meeting. That's how we train the staff, how that's how we went through it. So I think the curriculum alignment, the accreditation, a lot of the things that the district is going to be working on should be done in staff meeting time and part of staff meeting time because that's the whole purpose of it.
Right.
At least in the education and nonprofit world.
I just, I agree with Heather that staff meeting time for schools is often team meeting.
Right.
It's not, it's this isn't, I agree with Mr. Fitzpatrick that there are times where people need to get together and have a whole group conversation. Eighty percent of that in schools happens with emails. And once in a while today, Brian called the staff together at two twenty for fifteen minutes. And then he released them to their groups to do their work. Right? It happens a lot like that if they need an update on something important. Or there's something that the whole group needs to discuss, but rarely does the whole school discuss the same thing because you've got to remember, you've got science teachers, social studies teachers, English teachers, they need to meet in departments to talk about their work and plan their work. It's not, it's not the same as the business world.
I don't have any questions per se. Oh, hold on a second, Jamie, hold on. So I don't really have any questions, but I do. I guess I don't have any questions for you guys. But I do have a couple of questions. So first off, I want to say I have been banging down people's doors and asking for PD since well before I was on the board.
Yeah.
So I'm a huge advocate for PD. My question is, when we originally voted to do early release days, we said we were going to find a way that did not financially impact the parents to help. Where are we on that?
We have not done that. We have not had any requests for support from anyone.
Have we made any options available? Because I know when you're talking forty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Once a week, that's a hundred and eighty dollars.
Yep.
And parents, that's a lot. And so when nothing's being offered by the school for free, they figure it out, but it's not easy.
Yes.
So the whole reason I voted for it originally, number one, I want PD, but number two, we were going to be able to support our families. I I don't feel like we've done that, and I feel like we need to find a way to do that. So we need to figure out, I I honestly, I don't want to vote for either of these options because I don't feel like we've still come to the table with a full plan. So I'm just being perfectly honest with you. That's where I stand on this right now.
You'd like to have an option that provides a no or very low cost option.
I like a no cost option because we talked about the fact that we have paras in the buildings that are still contracted and rotating them around to cover whichever children need to be.
We did, and we we talked with the Y program to see if it was full. We we did not receive any feedback or concern from anyone.
It's because parents figure it out because there wasn't anything available.
If the board would like us to figure that out and provide a no cost option for an hour, we can do that.
Okay.
I'll ask Patty.
Yeah.
Patty, what would what would you do for the professional development that paras need? So we we would probably do a rotation where we have paras. The the thing you've got to understand is that this got a little more complicated than just assigning it to paras because you're assigning a bus run.
Mm hmm.
You have to figure out the bus run situation. So the question also becomes one of transportation. Do you want, do you want to, there may be if enough students stay at the school. So what I would suggest is that we do a survey of parents now.
Yes.
And say if we had a no cost option for this care, would you take it?
Right.
And then plan our busing according to those who say that they would take it. I actually agree with you that that's a lot of money.
Right.
Right? It is.
Yeah.
It is. I, that's why I asked if it was weekly.
Right.
And and Ryan, was that for just one afternoon, the forty-five dollars?
Yes.
Yes, that's what he said.
Yeah, per child, one per child.
Okay, so you could do two days, but it's but it's it's forty-five dollars either way. That's kind of the minimum. So we, I I just want to be clear with everyone in the room that I agree with Dawn that we need to, we need to explore that now.
Right.
Right now. So we we will certainly take a more 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 intense or more proactive stance to do what you're asking. If, but if the board approves it, direct us to do that. Direct us formally to do it. Because we thought that if the Y program got full, that we would have to start offering, we have not received a single concern from anyone.
So here's the thing. So I know I spoke to you about this. I had called the Y three times.
Yeah, and that is when I started
And like, and to for Ryan to say that they're not even at capacity. So they're not, they're not communicating with the residents in the community that we're are trying to get there. Like, I figured it out as a parent.
Yeah.
And I know I have other, I know other people that have figured it out. So I will say the Y has not been as communicative as they could be as well.
And when that came to light, we started looking into it. So Heather shared a concern with me about her process with the Y. And we are happy to do that. So what what I'm asking is if you approve it and you want that, we may have to add some additional busing. We don't know yet. We'd have to survey the parents, find out who wants care and for how long. Do you want, if it's only an hour, are you going to pick them up? I'm looking at Vanessa, but I shouldn't talk to the audience, but that's okay. I I just, or are you going to pick them up at four after the two-hour staff? What's the, we just need to, because the paras are only there until three twenty-five.
Right.
So that means that we either have to bus or have them picked up. We can solve these problems. But I'm asking you, if you approve it for one hour, that you direct us to allocate the resources, which means that some paras won't get certain PD on certain weeks. We'll rotate them. We can do that.
Can I ask for like, what would be the cost difference? Because you said if we don't do the one hour, you either have to pay the teachers or there was two substitute. What is the cost analysis between us doing paras, watching the kids versus like, I I kind of want to just know what the
I can give you Ambrose math numbers. Give you like a formal, Jamie, I don't have a spreadsheet on this, just locking it in early. Did you hear that, Jamie?
I did.
All right, I was just joking, just a little lighting it up a little bit. Um, we we it's a hundred and thirty dollars a day for a sub. Typically, you have five grade level teachers at a grade level or in a content area. So that's four hundred, uh, five times one thirty. So you're looking at six hundred and fifty dollars. The paras are already on staff. We just have to make sure that we have a process and have this all figured out for them. I don't have any problem with doing this. I just want to know that there's a need and that it's going to be used because we're taking paras out of professional development to provide coverage for families. And I'm fine with that if that's what the will of the community is.
I'd like to make a motion to do a survey for the parents on who needs child care.
Well, first, you got to adopt the early release days and direct us to do that.
Do we have to adopt a plan right now or can we ask for a survey before we move forward?
Yeah, I'd like to see a budget and where the money's going to come from.
Right.
Well, the money's already in the budget. The paras are already hourly paid in budget.
You're not talking about taking money out of the operating budget?
No.
Okay.
There's no cost. That's what I'm saying is that using the para is a no cost option. Hiring subs is a cost option.
Right.
Sorry, I didn't clearly articulate that. Using the paras is a no cost option.
The other thing I would recommend is if we're going to ask parents what they prefer, whether they're going to need this or not, we're going to need, and this is harkening back to our early COVID days when we were dealing with carpools and all this other stuff. Who actually is interested? We would, this could not be an anonymous gathering of information. We would have to have John Smith tell us that he needs this time for these three children because otherwise we would be, again, still spitballing in the dark going, well, I think these these kids are coming from Bakersfield. I think this is middle school. We would really need to be able to put hard and fast information by building.
I would just say that, you know, I agree with you, Dawn. I I if I, if you're asking me to vote tonight, I'd say no because I don't think I have enough information.
Okay.
So I I I wouldn't vote for it.
So you'd like to have a survey, just to be clear, of parents who would like coverage?
Or who who feel like they would need coverage if we were to adopt, I think, the one hour, right?
One hour.
Not the one half day a month.
Right, the one half day a month, I think we we all agree is
Yeah, right, that's, yeah.
That's pretty much what we've always done.
Yeah, right.
It's just a couple of days more. But if we do one hour once a week, there's, so I have another question I'd want to know from parents. Um, would you be picking your child up or do you need transportation?
Yeah.
Because that changes the bus routes for just that one hour. If we have forty-five kids more than the, because there's already forty-five kids or so that go to the YMCA program already. Some of them may choose not to go that day and save the money. That's fine. But let's say it doubles. That does change the busing needs for the hour before. And what we discussed about this at the admin team meeting this week was if we have busing at three twenty-five, it might be limited routes. It might be regional instead of door-to-door or the standard bus. We just have to figure that out because we don't know where they're going to live. I mean, it's not as simple as do you need us to pick you up with a bus? We can't run two full bus runs. We have to, we have to know where they are and and plan that out. And that's the part that gets tricky, right, is the pickup part, but we can work on it.
And on the flip side of that, if you don't get responses, then you're not pulling parents away from the development.
Yeah, we know, we know that, we know, or or if we get limited responses, we'll figure it out. So let's do the survey. I, the only question that I had, Patty, is how are you doing on planning timelines and whatnot? Do you need them to adopt the calendar but not the early release days? Can you wait until?
I think it would be helpful if we could adopt the calendar so that we've got dates and then do a early release decision later because we are getting into some timelines for things and we've also got, you know, a number of other surveys that are going to be going out. I think that our information gathering approach for this one would have to be different and not call it a survey because I'm also concerned about survey fatigue. We've got to figure
I don't, and I guess I use the wrong word. It wouldn't be a survey. It would be a, we need to know
Right.
Your child needs after school.
Right, and and just some kind of an outreach because we've got a lot of other stuff. I'm just concerned about fatigue.
Yeah, this one, if if we don't put it out as a survey, it is a
Email us by this day, yeah.
If this is approved, you're signing up because this is a need you have. That's, that's what we need to know.
And just one point of clarification because I'm looking at the calendar and I keep hearing weekly. It's just me.
This does not show the weekly.
This is the
One that's in here is the once a month.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, we should have clarified that. Yeah. So those little green boxes would just become every week.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Heather mentioned that I was looking at this from a profit perspective, but not really. What I'm looking at it is for an efficient use of time. And I mentioned staff meetings and Mr. Ambrose asked the, Mr. Ambrose already when he said we have two one-hour staff meetings a month. And then when he went to the administrators, I heard Mr. Stack say, well, we don't have staff meetings, just have staff meetings. So we don't really have two a month. I heard Mr. McCluskey say, we have maybe one a month. So again, it comes back to me that some of the things that you talk about staff meeting are, where do we stand on timetables? Where do we stand on other actions that need to happen? And 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 not having that and not having a a staff meeting structure, I guess I'm still a little confused about staff meeting. So I'll follow back up with Mr. Ambrose after the meeting as to exactly what is our structure because it's not clear to me from the discussion that we just had as to what our structure truly is for staff meetings in the different buildings.
So I'll I'll just clarify that now for everyone instead of doing it later. Is that okay, Jamie?
I'll still follow up, but that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. So I want to be clear, there's there's Jamie is defining a staff meeting as a time when a whole group of building gets together, I think. Tell me if I'm wrong, Jamie. But but the traditional definition of a staff meeting, I'll put it this way, is when the entire staff gets together to have a discussion.
Could be a department.
Well, it it could be a department, but it's not, it's typically, go ahead.
I'm the one who created the calendar with this, so I can, I can tell you exactly what it is. Once a month, they have a staff meeting day. Whole, whole building gets together.
For one hour.
For one hour. Yep. That happens intermittently depending on what's on the agenda. Twice a week, twice a month, they have PLC meetings where they gather by department or grade level to discuss student-student work. That leaves us with a fourth Wednesday. Sometimes there's five, and if there's five, you just end up adding another gathering time to talk about students. But the last one is usually used for what we used to have as the early release Wednesdays, which would be time for training, anything else like that. So you think about four, four weeks in a month. One is staff, two are PLC, one is some kind of training, early release activity, something else.
So so I just want to be clear that there's a definition of a staff meeting in the teacher's contract. It's when the staff is required to stay one hour longer than their normal working day, and that happens twice a month. We would put that time up against these early release days so that we double the amount of time. And Jamie's right, sometimes the whole staff does have to meet. But in education, oftentimes, staff meetings are used as department meetings or team meetings. So I just want to clarify that it's it's, he's right that you need time sometimes for people to meet. But when I was speaking earlier about staff meetings, I was speaking about the contractually obligated hours, not, it's just a terminology issue. I I know what I meant and I understand what Jamie thought I meant, but they are two different things. We call a one-hour meeting after school staff meeting time. It doesn't mean that the whole staff's always meeting together in the same room. So I hope that clarifies a little, Jamie, and I'll catch up with you later. We'll we'll follow up.
Yeah, I'll I'll get with you next week.
Yep, no problem.
All right. Do we need to make a motion to accept without the early release discussion?
Okay.
Well, I I'd like you to make a motion to accept. And we will do a survey about who would like childcare for one-hour early release days to discuss at the next meeting so that we're super clear about what we're doing. And transportation.
So we make it, so you can make a motion to accept the academic calendar.
Yeah. I guess we don't really, I mean, there's two up, so it's hard to say. So I guess we need to say without, we, I think we need to specify without early, early release days. And
An informational form will go out regarding
A form, yes, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I think I'm clear, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the academic calendar for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three without the early release days or an informational form to go out regarding after-school care and transportation. Did I do that right?
I think so, it's good enough.
All right, any further discussion? All right. Jamie?
No, I was just going to say what 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 Heather just did, that you really need the motion to to say without the early release days, and then we're going to revisit that. No, I was just going to say what, what, what Heather just did, that you really need the motion to, to say without the early release days and then we're going to revisit that after, so.
Okay. All right. Then we'll do roll call vote. Jamie?
I.
Rick?
Hi.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Good. We'll get that survey done for you.
Thank you. All right. Second public comment. Vanessa cannot jump up fast enough.
Vanessa Matias from Kingston. I just want to give you guys a little bit of insight. So. Aiden started in this district in kindergarten, so he's a senior this year. So he's been in the Y program. Since kindergarten, so essentially twelve years. So. The Y program right now is not at full capacity because of COVID, but every other year that my children were in there. It was a battle, like it literally opened up and. You got advantage being in the program and it was like you text all your friends like it's open, quick sign up. So. Tom, when we had talked about. Early release days being every week, that was one thing that I emphasized with you. I want to be the voice of a, a dual working family. And I think as a district, if there's things that you guys need for professional development. Then you should have already been putting plans in place for parents. It has to be a give take relationship. You have to offer something for parents. For example, like Isaiah, next year, I've mentioned the. The sports has always been a problem, right? Like they get out early, my kids are floating around, how am I getting back to sports? Oh, they have a game at four, like. It's a disaster. So if they have a four o'clock game and they get out at twelve thirty, what do these kids do? They don't have transportation, you know, so. I'm fortunate that I have a senior, but that's going to go away next year. So if you offer the middle school kids an after school program, but parents don't have somewhere to send the younger children. Then what do you do with the younger kids? You know what I mean? So. You have to find something like you have to work with parents and I'm glad that you guys are looking at something. Because I said it, you know, in the beginning when we were talking about this. So that's just me. Oh, and it's forty-five dollars per kid. There's no. So I had three kids in the Y. Now I sign them up for full time because you get a discount, but. If you're doing two days and you have three kids, you don't get a discount. So it adds up very quickly. So from a parent's standpoint. You know, if it's five hundred dollars for you guys to do subs, well, guess what? If I have two kids, it's three hundred and sixty dollars. Why is the burden on me as a parent? When you need more professional development time, like either you foot the bill, you do it before, after school hours, or you find a program that's free to parents.
Hi, everyone. Courtney Hugh at Kingston. Vanessa has a great point and I do want to also bring just a few comments. So not only do you have the Y, but I. Work on the board of the, one of the local daycares and daycares are maxed out. They're not, they don't have enough teachers to support it. So even the options for sending someone outside of the Y is limited. So keep that in mind. I just want to make sure that, just because I've been listening, that you guys walk away understanding what the actual ask is. So I know that Dawn, you reiterated it, but I think as a group, you guys should probably say, hey, we need forty hours. We needed to be cost-reared and that you guys walk out of this knowing exactly what everyone wants and needs out of the plan. And somewhat related, you guys have a lot going on and it was encouraging for me to hear that. You know, the things that I think are important, the curriculum and the facilities are top of mind for you guys. With their lot going on and you're talking about how you split up your time, if you focus on those priorities. And maybe if when you're developing those subcommittees, that facilities and curriculum are priority, you put more people on those and focus on those and fix those. And some of those other issues that you're having may fall out. So those are my comments.
It's fine. It's fine. Thank you. We do have a non-public.
All right. Fine. Then we will.
Who's going to, who's going to put us in the non-public?
Well, I gotta, next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, April sixth. It's my birthday, so everybody bring cupcakes.
Can I say something before we go into?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
It'll take like five minutes.
Uh-oh, I don't know if you can have five. Enough teasing.
You can do it in three. I think it's important to say, and you know, Tom brought it up, so I'm just going to elaborate on a little bit and, and I can do it in a couple. Easy ways, I think.
Soon as I get silenced.
He wants to gavel.
What I'll say is this, when I moved to Kingston. We moved right before Kingston days. And my first introduction to Kingston was Kingston. He's really where I met people. And I, and I'll say a couple of things. First thing is I remember the NKTA. Had their booth up. And I was walking with some parents and immediately the first thing I heard was, that's the devil. And then I joined the budget committee in town. And I had other people say, the school is the devil. So I had two devils and I really had to figure out who really was the devil. And Tom, you hit it, like this community, and I've lived in a lot. I mean, most of you people lived through your whole life and I applaud you for that. I've moved a tremendous amount. And this is the first community that really is broken, in my opinion, and I love it here. Don't get me wrong. But if we don't find a way to listen. Without looking at who is saying what they're saying, we're not going to move forward. Okay. One thing I did commit to do, and this is going to take me a few minutes. I talked to a lot of people and some of those people were teachers prior to.
Well, Don Rick, I gotta, I gotta make sure we can do a off, non-agenda item.
Okay, we're coming up.
I don't know.
I think it's important that if you want to talk about the district culture, that we should place it on an agenda.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, yeah. I just don't want to get in trouble because we're moving off of agenda topic. So, but if you want to do something, let me know and we can talk about putting it on the next agenda.
Absolutely.
So awesome. Thank you. Sorry. I want to cut you off. I, I appreciate that. I want to get in trouble here. I know. First, our first meetings, we don't get in trouble, right? All right. So. Oh yeah. So next meeting, April sixth, at six PM. Like I said, it's my birthday, bring cupcakes. I'm joking. Don't, I can't eat them. I can't.
She really is.
I, I really, I really.
Can you eat gluten-free ones?
I can. And it'll be held in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. And now we can move into non-public if someone will bring us there. I don't.
I move that we go into non-public session RSA ninety-one dash A colon three paragraph two.
Second. All right. Roll call vote. Jamie?
I have five minutes.
Yeah, we'll take a break. Rick?
This is only going to take two minutes, but.
Uh, just to go, Heather?
Yes.
Tammy? Jim?
Yep.
And myself, yes.